Good morning, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Tuesday, April 19th. I'd like to ask now that Howard Tipton lead us, if everyone would please rise, we'll do an invocation and then the pledge.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we come together this morning with hearts filled with gratitude for the many blessings on our community. The blessings of liberty, the blessings of freedom, and the men and women who stand ready to defend it, the blessings of so much natural beauty. May we always be mindful of these blessings as we remember that to whom much is given, much is also expected. Father, we know that your hand is in all things, and so today, we ask for discernment and wisdom on the issues coming before this commission. May your love and grace be with us always. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment. This public comment has to exclude anything from the public hearing items that are on the agenda today. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on a non-agended item, now is your time to speak. Good morning, and please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Josephs, and I live at 10650 Carlton Road in Port St. Lucie, Florida, 34987. I'm a resident and owner of a tropical fish farm in the agricultural community off of Carlton Road. I have met with some of you already, and plan to meet with all of you to discuss the concern over the proposed M Ranch Mine Project that includes a haul road that will run up the side of my property. My family has run our fish farm for 17 years. It is a generational farm that my husband and I and our two children have taken over from his parents. We plan to be here running this successful business for 20 years, and then hopefully pass it along to our children. I understand our industry is niche, and it might be difficult to see how negative an impact this mine will have on us, so I'm presenting you with a letter from an expert over at the University of Flores Tropical Aquaculture Laboratory, who after reading the details of this project, attest the impact this mine will have on our shallow water table ponds we use to grow our fish. He also mentions that the fish hatcheries should be kept quiet to promote breeding activities. The impact on the water table, and the noise from the passing dump trucks every five minutes, eight hours a day, six days a week, nearly 40 feet from my property line, has a very high potential, if not very likely, potential of putting us out of business. We are the number one breeder of the Corydorus fish in the country, so this will not only impact us, but the entire aquaculture community. The property owner and applicant has made no attempt to reach out to us at this time, and has the audacity to submit public documents such as a conditional use application supplement, where he states that the proposed mine use is consistent and compatible with the other uses, which includes a fish farm. Finally, I want to mention that in an attempt to get the attention of the commissioners, 93 residents of the Ag community on very short notice came to a location and signed a notarized petition to stop this project back in November of 2021, after they received notice that the pre-application had been submitted. You will be voting on this project soon, and I implore you to vote no. If you vote yes, you will seal my family's fate, and we will lose everything that we've worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Good morning, please identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Melissa Jakes, and I live off of the 2100 block of Glades Cut Off Road. I'm here today to follow up my neighbor, Jamie. I don't have really a prepared speech, but I did want to just be here and show my support and ask all of you to please research this mine and the implications that it has on the health and the safety and the well-being of our residents. We pride ourselves as a farm-to-table community. We grow from the ground up, not the ground down. There is not enough research to show, studies in the United States, there's actually quite a few abroad, that show the significant impacts that it has to farming and residents in a five to 10-mile surrounding area with the dust, water runoff, drainage, all of which you know that we suffer from already as it stands. So Commissioner Chris, I don't want to
You didn't.
destroy your last name like people destroy mine, but I watched you on the last commission meeting ask the community to stand up, and stand up for nature and for our beautiful agricultural lands with all the development that's coming up, and I'm here today standing up for that, and I'm asking all of you to please stand with us. Stand with us and think very, very deeply before you approve something that could be catastrophic to not just us, but to our aquifer and to the surrounding communities, the 30,000 potential residents that will be moving in just down the road, and I seriously ask you to please think about the safety, the dump trucks, the uncontrollable traffic, and the emergency management response back there from all of the extra congestion. We deserve the same safety as we enjoy today, tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Good morning, sir, and please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Mark DeRosa. I live at 3143 South Indian River Drive. Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to address the commission. I'd like to speak today about my neighborhood, which is South Indian River Drive. For as long as I can remember, the county and the public have considered this road to be a north-south commuter artery, and a study done in 2016 showed that over 6,000 cars a day use the road every day. Today, that number is surely substantially higher. I'd like to remind everyone here that this is indeed a residential street. There are over 600 homes, which means that there are over 600 driveways spaced about every 100 feet, with 600 mailboxes as well. I'd like to point out that the scenic nature of this road is entirely due to the upkeep of the residents. The gorgeous views that you see are due to the maintenance of the riverbank by the residents. The substantial amount of trash, specifically alcoholic bottles and cans, are picked up by the residents, and to my knowledge, the county spends $0 to maintain the beauty of this scenic drive through vegetation and trash removal. It's done entirely by the residents of this residential neighborhood. The last few years, we have seen the rise of home delivery services such as Amazon, UPS, FedEx, and the U.S. Postal Service. Oftentimes, residents' driveways are too narrow for some delivery trucks to navigate, and therefore, they will park in the street for 30 seconds to a few minutes and block a lane. This becomes problematic when drivers are driving at excessive speeds, especially during times of high traffic. This is just one of the reasons why I think it's appropriate to lower the speed limit to 30 miles per hour from 35. Additionally, speeding fines in the county for speeds of 6 to 9 miles per hour over the speed limit are $131, which means that drivers can go as fast as 44 miles per hour and still pay the minimum fine. Lowering the speed limit is a cheap way for the county to tame the traffic. For comparison's sake, I would like to bring up the newly completed Midway Road, which is a four-lane divided highway, or road, with almost no residential aspects. Why is the speed limit 30 miles per hour on Midway Road and 5 miles per hour higher through our residential neighborhood? If the county does indeed change the speed limit signs, I think it would also be a good idea to add another component to these signs. I've seen the city of Port St. Lucie doing in their residential neighborhoods. They've placed a small sign above the speed limit sign that simply says "neighborhood." This is another cheap and easy way to remind drivers that people actually live here, and they are driving through our front yards in our neighborhood. Lastly, I'd like to bring up the $1.3 million budget the county assigned to improving South Indian River Drive last year. This money was only allocated for a section between Midway Road and Walton Road. This only represents about 40% of the road. We need the county to approve funds this year to address the other segments of the road as well. We've come a long way over the last few years towards improving the safety on this road through restriping, stop signs at the intersection, the Cape Seal resurfacing, and the speed radar feedback signs, but we still have a ways to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on a non-agended item? Seeing that, seeing none, I'll close public comment. We'll go back to the approval of the minutes for the B.O.C.C. special meeting of March 29th and the regular meeting of April 5th.
We have approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move on to proclamations, and please bear with me, we have five of them today. Their first one will be Resolution 22045, reclaiming the month of April 22 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And with us today will be Mark, Matt Markley, from the CEO of Hibiscus Children's Center. Are you here? If he's not here, oh, ma'am, come on. I'll meet you down by the podium.
A resolution proclaiming April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and recognizing Hibiscus Children's Center founder Levon Tilton for 35 years of serving children in St. Lucie County, Florida, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Children are vital to our future success, and every child has the right to be safe, healthy, and happy. All children deserve to receive love, nurturing, and care, and live in communities that foster their healthy growth and development. Child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of any community. Hibiscus Children's Center upholds the legacy of transforming the lives of children and families, and embraces opportunities that can potentially change the way society cares for children. Hibiscus Children's Center honors its founder, Levon Tilton, 1925 to 2021, by recognizing her vision, passion, and commitment to create a safe space for abused children, which came to futation in 1985, when she founded Hibiscus Children's Center. Hibiscus has since provided 425,000 safe nights to over 3,000 abused, abandoned, and neglected children on the Treasure Coast. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does proclaim April 22 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board recognizes and commends Hibiscus Children's Center founder Levon Tilton for 35 years of serving children in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board commends Hibiscus Children's Center for their work providing a safe haven and services, including mental health counseling to children and families in our community. Passed and duly adopted this 19th day of April 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bart, second by Commissioner Zadowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. With us this morning, unfortunately, Matt Markley is on his way, but Tracy Savoya?
Savoya.
Savoya, pretty close, is here to accept, so first we'll get a picture with Eric.
Thank you so much for giving me just a moment, and for the proclamation. April is such a special month to us and many other nonprofits that are working so hard to really transform the lives of children. Hibiscus was founded, as you mentioned in the proclamation, in 1985 by one woman who her sole purpose was to ensure that children could live free of abuse and neglect and abandonment. And our shelter began with just 12 children, and today, 30-some years later, we've grown to several programs, two residential facilities, and many, many services in the community where children are being helped to overcome their traumas of abuse. There are many obstacles and challenges they've had to endure at the hands of parents and caregivers, but we're not only trying to protect them and help them build a stronger future, but we want to help them really excel in life and become productive citizens, and we have many programs that are doing that right here in St. Lucie County. We have a prevention program where we're really working to educate parents on how they're helping their children in life and providing safe environments, and what kind of skills do children need, and education is such an important factor for us, so we do focus on that. And we work with over 580 families every year in supporting Families for Crisis right here in St. Lucie, and it's making a tremendous difference. The program has a 100% success rate in keeping children out of the child welfare system, which is always the goal. Keep them in their home with the proper services so that they can live safe and loving lives and build a future for themselves. We have mental health counseling, where we're helping children victimized by abuse or have experienced, it could be bullying, it can be divorce in the home, whatever the situation or crisis, we're helping them overcome those with the resources and coping skills that they don't have. And we're trying to again educate parents how to help their children as well, so that the result is always safe and loving homes for the children. And as we move forward, we want to just thank you so very much for your support over the years. Since we opened our doors in 1985, more than 50% of our children have come from St. Lucie County in our facilities across the Treasure Coast, and we've always been a very big part of the community, and your support is just, it's priceless, because we just can't do it without our community partners, our supporters, the other agencies. We are all in this together to make a difference and make sure our children are safe and loved and have a chance at a bright future. So thank you so much.
Next up is Resolution 22060, proclaiming April as National Minority Health Month in St. Lucie County, and this will be accepted by Kalita Scott, Stephanie Myers, and Jennifer Harris. Madam Clerk?
A resolution proclaiming April 2022 as National Minority Health Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. National Minority Health Month is an inclusive effort to recognize and raise awareness of the unique health needs, challenges, and disparities facing Black, Hispanic, Latinx, Asian-American, and Pacific Islanders, Indigenous, and all communities of color, and to encourage action through health education, early detection, and control of disease complications. The environments in which people live, work, learn, and play have tremendous impact on their health, and inequities in health begin before birth and are perpetrated by social and economic factors such as safe and affordable housing, transportation, and neighborhoods, as well as access to affordable and quality, healthy foods, health insurance, education, and health, care, livable wage employment, and environments free from bias and discrimination. Communities of color make up 26.4% of St. Lucie County's total population, and significant disparities exist that result in lower life expectancies and reduced quality of life. Without a forced effort to eliminate health disparities and inequities, the burden of poor health on people who are marginalized will multiply, and the associated costs will be staggered for everyone. Incorporating health considerations into decision-making across all sectors and policy areas, and implementing policies, practices, surveillance, and research that includes focus on achieving health equity in the most effective and least costly way of changing systems and norms that contribute to health inequities. Florida Law 38175 established the Office of Minority Health and Health Equity to increase the policy programs and practices that support health inequity in Florida and St. Lucie residents, and local leaders have identified in the local health improvement plan the need to unify community approach to eliminate health disparities. The COVID-19 pandemic has underscored these underlying health and social inequities, with national data demonstrating the racial minority groups are at increased risk of greater economic consequences, more severe illness, and death from COVID-19. In accordance with this year's National Minority Month theme, give your community a boost, the Florida Department of Health seeks to empower the community to get the focus about COVID-19 vaccines. St. Lucie County supports the Florida Department of Health in St. Lucie's effort to help eliminate health disparities, accelerate health equity, and make our citizens stronger and healthier. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Minority Health Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. Passed and duly adopted this 19th day of April 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
We have approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And at this time, I'd like Kalita Scott to say a few words, please.
Good morning, thank you, commissioners. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity and giving us this proclamation. Minority Health Month is a nationally recognized 30-day health and wellness campaign. The goals of Minority Health Month are to provide crucial information to allow individuals to practice disease prevention, promote healthy lifestyles, showcase healthcare providers and resources, highlight the unequal health of St. Lucie County minorities compared to non-minorities, and to increase ongoing community support to improve minority health. A health equity task force and team are compiled, as well as the Healthy St. Lucie Coalition, and we're working to create our health equity plan. And it's not just for the Health Department, it is for our entire community, and we're so excited to be working with our upward mobility cohort here with St. Lucie County. I feel that all of, we feel that all of these efforts are moving together synergistically, and we're excited to come before you in the future to discuss health and all policies and how we continue to work together so that everyone can reach their full health potential. Thank you.
Next is Resolution 22066, proclaiming the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in St. Lucie County. Today will be accepted by Rachel Pop Finch, who is the Board Director of the Inner Truth Project. Good morning.
A resolution proclaiming the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is a widespread public health problem and impacts every person in St. Lucie County. Every day, too many women, men, and children across Florida suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault in all of its forms. These crimes occur far too frequently, go unreported far too often, and leave long-lasting physical and emotional scars. During National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we recommend ourselves to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, expanding support and understanding survivors, and strengthening our response. Sexual violence affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances, and as a community, we share the responsibility for protecting each other from sexual assault, supporting survivors when it does occur, and bringing perpetrators to justice. At every level, we must work to provide necessary resources to survivors of every circumstance without judgment and with dignity, including medical attention, mental health services, relocation and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process. St. Lucie County communities can come together to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support survivors, and heal lives. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board further proclaims that now is the time to take action as leaders in our community to create safe environments for all St. Lucie County citizens, including our youth and our educational institutions. We must work together to educate members of our community about sexual violence prevention, support survivors, and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions. We join advocates and communities across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence and recognize that each day of this year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Passed and duly adopted this 19th day of April 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
We have approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
This is the winner of the Masters, by the way.
I thought somebody was going to say that to me this morning. Green is actually the color that represents sexual violence survivors and is very passionate to our organization called the Inner Truth. I would like to thank you all for your continued support. The Inner Truth Project has been open for 10 years, and it is very important to our community that this mission is continuously supported. One in three women have been affected by sexual violence, and believe it or not, one in six men have. And oftentimes, people don't have the power or the confidence to come forward, and so with support like this from our community, it makes it easier for women and men to come forward and start living a life of understanding, confidence, and respect. Last year, during the COVID times, we had over 11,000 calls. 11,000. That is astronomical, okay? And the calls increase every single week. So this support of this is very important to our community, and I just wanted to share that because I think that brings in some reality. On behalf of the Inner Truth Project and Minnie Fetterman, thank you for your continued support of our Inner Truth Project for helping survivors become resilient. Thank you.
Before you go, before you go. So organizations like yours often need support, whether it be sponsorships, donors, et cetera, and those who are in need need to be able to contact you. So could you share with the public, you know, how they can get involved with your organization through either donations, sponsorships, et cetera, but also for those who would like to be helped by your nonprofit?
Well, thank you so much. The Inner Truth Project is located in Port St. Lucie. You can find out more information about the programs and services. We have therapy, we have group support. Right now, we have 316 people in our groups, and that ranges from teenagers to, there's all women groups, there's all men groups. You can go to theinnertruthproject.org, and you can find out more information. You can also follow us on social media. We have online support groups. We do workshops and presentations on how to become an advocate for yourself and how to just overcome these adversities, and I wanted to give you the phone number.
I should have warned you, I do this to everybody.
That's okay. I can handle it. Okay, so the number to get some direct support, we have 24-hour support, is 772-200-4599. And if you would like to set up an appointment to talk to an advocate, you can email info@innertruthproject.org. Again, that's info@innertruthproject.org. Thank you. And there's plenty of ways to get involved. We have volunteer options all the time. We have several fundraisers. We have an event coming up on May 14th. It's called our Annual Clothes Swap Pop-Up Boutique, and this is a great way for women to come and get some new clothes. They're new or gently used. We're also taking donations for that right now, so if you have any donations of new or gently used clothes, you're more than welcome to reach out to the number that I provided, 772-200-4599, or you can drop them off at Indian River State College, I'm located right down the street. You're welcome.
Next, we have Resolution 22074, Workers Memorial Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. With us this morning is Bill Sowers, the President of Florida Alliance for Retired Americans, Steve Myers, the Business Representative for Teamsters Local 769, Kevin Burns, retired postal worker and a member of the AFL-CIO, and Adam Campbell from IBW 728. Would some, you like to come up? We'll get a picture, and madam, would you please read the proclamation?
A resolution declaring April 28th, 2022, as Workers Memorial Day in St. Lucie County, Florida, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Each April 28th, we observe Workers Memorial Day as a day to remember those who have suffered and died on the job. We remember those who have died in workplaces, workplace catastrophes, suffered diseases because of exposure to toxic substances, or have been injured because of dangerous conditions. We rededicate ourselves to the fight for workplace, for a safe workplace. The core theme for Workers Memorial Day has been mourn the dead, fighting for the living. April 28th was chosen because it's the anniversary of when the occupational safety and
April 28th was chosen because it's the anniversary of when the Occupational Safety and Health Act went into effect. Workers Memorial Day is observed in nearly 100 countries. Palm Beach Treasure Coast AFL-CIO will have a remembrance ceremony at 5:00 PM on April 28th, 2022, virtually via Zoom. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby declare April 28th, 2022, as Workers Memorial Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. Passed and duly adopted this 19th day of April 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bart, second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also with us is Vicky Rodriguez from the NEA, National Education Association, and David Freeland, who represents the teachers here in St. Lucie County. And on a personal note, I just want to tell you that on April 8th, 2008, in my previous profession, I was the businessman manager of a construction union. And we had a fatality where I had to go and tell the mother, the wife, and a three-year-old daughter that their dad wasn't coming home. And it was the hardest thing I think I've ever had to go through in my life. So as the saying goes, you work safe and hope that your fellow brothers and sisters get home in the same shape that they went to work at. So at this time, I'd like to ask Adam Campbell to say a few words, and again, thank you all to my brothers and sisters.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. On April 28th, the labor movement will once again observe Workers Memorial Day to remember workers killed or injured on the job and to renew the fight for strong safety and health protections. On behalf of the Palm Beach Treasure Coast AFL-CIO, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for this resolution.
Okay. Moving right along. Next up is Resolution 22-061, honoring Ms. Lucille Riley Wrights of St. Lucie County. And with us this morning is Lucille Riley Wrights with Michael and Roberta Murray.
A resolution honoring Ms. Lucille Riley Wrights for her many years of faithful and dedicated service in St. Lucie County, Florida, where as the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida has made the following determinations. St. Lucie County recognizes the many historic contributions to this community by one of the Treasure Coast's most prominent historians, Ms. Lucille Riley Wrights. She is a respected historian, educator, author, archaeologist, and volunteer who has so generously contributed her time, knowledge, and talent to St. Lucie Village. St. Lucie County recognizes Ms. Lucille Riley Wrights' research and nomination efforts in the designation in 1989 of St. Lucie Village to the National Register of Historic Places. Ms. Lucille Riley Wrights' generous contributions to the preservation and protection of the historical resources of St. Lucie Village, and especially to her authorship of a portrait of St. Lucie County while she resided in St. Lucie Village's historic district. St. Lucie County recognizes Ms. Lucille Riley Wrights' outstanding service at the St. Lucie School, her volunteer work, and generous contributions as a past member of the St. Lucie Village School Board. Ms. Wrights is a longtime member and a past president of the St. Lucie Historical Society, has conducted extensive original research into local history and participated in archaeological studies of the site of the Fort Pierce Army Post, which extended during the Second Seminole War, has written and published many informative articles on local history in addition to study materials for history teachers and museum volunteers, and was a leader in the effort to reopen the St. Lucie County Regional History Center in 2010, so it could continue serving the public, especially student groups from area schools. Ms. Wrights was highly instrumental in reacquiring valuable artifacts from the 1715 Spanish Treasure Fleet on loan from the state of Florida, which has been removed while the museum was closed. She also has devoted hundreds of hours as a volunteer at the Regional History Center in our public service activities of the Historical Society. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, does hereby honor Ms. Lucille Riley Wrights for her many years of faithful and dedicated service of St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted this 19th day of April 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by all three is, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it's truly an honor to have you here today. Would you please say a few words?
Yes.
I'll never remember half the stuff she's already forgotten. That's how integral this woman is. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, and thank you all for this unvaried. I just didn't know what to say because this was completely new to me. And thank you for the... Thank you. Anyway. I appreciate it, but I want to say a few words. If you look out at the audience, we have people who have worked and still are working for the things that we did earlier. The museum under the control of Nancy has been great. And we really appreciate Nancy and her volunteers and everybody else. We have a historical museum right in our order where the country is. I'd like to show you one thing, though. I'm wearing an Indian jacket. This was made over 25 years ago when we had a special day at the museum, when the Indians came with their things. And when you look at this, there's no places to put your things. No zippers, no pockets, nothing. This was the way the Indians really started out. And if you're interested enough in their things, you call this, open it up. And you look at the inside to make sure that the material has been not cut, but torn. And otherwise, now they're saying that Japan was starting to do this. So if you are buying anything Indian, look up in the back. And this old jacket has seen many days. Also, we appreciate especially the Indian mound along the drive, which another group has been responsible for. And they have really saved it. And we know now that it's burial, but by Indian burials in the mound by professionals. And what else can I tell you about that? If you haven't seen that old Fort Pierce site, that's where the mound is. And it's beautiful, and this group over here still keeps it up. And I'm not here anymore, so it's up to them. What else can we say? You've got a great...
She's earned the right.
I'd like to thank everybody, though, who is here. And keep on, keep on doing what you're doing and adding more when necessary. And I'm 93 years old now, and next week I'll be 94. So I'm passing on to y'all. And I hope you enjoy it as much as I have. And thank you so much. And thank you, Commissioners.
She said, "You better wait another week." And I'd like to just make a point of personal privilege to thank Mayor Hudson from Fort Pierce. He's in the audience, and she's on the Historical Society also. So thank you all. Really appreciate it.
And thank you all, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And Nancy, don't think we didn't forget about you. We know that you're like the twin that Lucille never had.
Okay, moving right along. Thank you, everyone. Next is a presentation of the Sunshine Laundry and WPSL Christmas Kids Check presentation. With us today is Carol Wyatt and her husband Greg, and Tom Rhodes from the Sunshine Library.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Summer Ivy Platt. I'm Parks and Special Facilities Division Manager. We have two items today that are integral to our swimming programs at our county pools. I have with us Kira Donbrowski. She's our new aquatics and safety coordinator. For those who have not met her, she's going to give you a quick rundown of what these two presentations do for our programs. And I'm going to give you some flyers that Mr. Rhodes has brought us. So thank you for giving us this time.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Very happy to be here.
Good morning.
We are here to accept two generous donations to the St. Lucie County Aquatics Programs from two longtime partners, WPSL Christmas Kids and Sunshine Laundry. These donations will allow children in St. Lucie County to participate in swim lessons at a greatly reduced cost. WPSL is donating $6,875, and Mrs. Carol Wyatt is here representing WPSL Christmas Kids. And Sunshine Laundry is donating $2,500, and Mr. Tom Rhodes is here representing Sunshine Laundry. Our department and community greatly appreciate these donations to help families receive swim lessons. According to the CDC, drowning is one of the leading causes of unintentional deaths in children under the age of 18 in the U.S. and is the second-leading cause of unintentional injury deaths in children between the ages of 1 and 14. For every drowning death, there are multiple non-fatal drowning incidents that occur that result in injury, some of which result in long-term disabilities. Statistics show that participation in formal swim lessons can reduce the risk of drowning among children and young adults. St. Lucie County Aquatics strives to make residents safer in and around the water by providing opportunities for affordable swim lessons. Thanks to WPSL Christmas Kids and Sunshine Laundry, a total of 175 children have been given the chance to participate in swim lessons to begin life-saving knowledge and skills that they may not have otherwise had. And I would like to present Mrs. Carol Wyatt. She's going to say a few words.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, and certainly we're very glad to be able to come back year after year. It's the work of a lot of volunteers and generous contributors to the Christmas Kids. We always say the Christmas Kids are a reflection of the generosity of St. Lucie County. But we're glad to bring the $6,875. We believe that will cover about 125 children to go through a sixth week in the water, water safety program, which becomes so important to try to make the children in St. Lucie County safer. So certainly, thank you. We also know that now in this year, it's a challenge to hire and train all of the people that are needed for the water safety instruction. And certainly, we thank Parks and Rec for doing that, and thank the County Commission for keeping the water safety program going. So the Christmas Kids are glad to help.
Thank you so much, Carol. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, can you come up here? And then we'll get the Commissioners together and we'll get a picture.
And we'll let Mr. Rhodes say a few words as well.
Please, Mr. Rhodes.
After a COVID-related hiatus last year where we couldn't do this, it's my pleasure to present $2,500 check to the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissions so we can re-implement our swimming scholarships available to the general public. Massachusetts Institute of Technology has a swimming test that they require all their students to pass before they graduate from college. Some students wait until the very last minute. They're a quarter credit late, are short of getting their degree. So they literally line up the day before graduation to take the test. Story goes, this was implemented by a father of an MIT student who drowned. And he was so moved by, after his grief, he was so moved to take action that he used his influence and his money to require the College of Massachusetts Institute of Technology to require all his students to pass a swim test. So while we can't mandate that our children take a swim test, we can't put our influence and our resources behind it. And so I have the will, but you all have the resources, the manpower, to help make my desire for children to be able to swim possible. So I am more than glad to do this every single year. I tell, say, the previous years, there were lots of checks I write out in my business. But these are the fun ones to write out that really bring me great joy. Thank you for this partnership that we can enjoy together.
Thank you so much. And would you all like to join us up here in front of the dais with the check? And I'm just going to add that on August 2nd, 1992, I found my daughter Ariel, who was one-year-old, twice her size. I thought it was floating in the pool. And to me, this hits home. And I can just tell you that it was the scariest part of my life, but God is good because he gave her back to us, and she's a school, public school teacher today. But teach your children how to float. Again, thank you so much. You can give it to the attorney. Thank you.
Don't give it to the attorney.
Thank you again so much. Next, we're moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anything that would want to be pulled for discussion, for it to be pulled?
No approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed? Motion carries. I just wanted to say under G2, the St. Lucie County Correctional Facility Medical Wing Expansion Study that is funded by the American Rescue Plan. Before we go on to public hearings, I'd like to recognize the city manager of Port St. Lucie, Russ Blackburn. Russ, thank you for being with us today. And administration, who will be, I think you have John?
Yes, sir. It'll be our Director of Innovation and Performance, John DeCannich, and he will be taking you through the second public hearing for a number of our impact fees and ordinances.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, John DeCannich, Innovation and Performance Division Director. This morning, I'm going to present to you our updates to the various county impact fees. Similar to the last meeting, I prepared a single presentation. This time, it'll cover all six items. We'll pause at the appropriate moment to open it up because it is the second public hearing. So you can, you know, provide your comments as well as open up to public our comments on these items. So the first four items are related to the impact fee study update, the library parks, recreation, public buildings, law enforcement. If you recall, the county retained PFM Consulting Group to update our impact fee study, which the study is attached to your agenda item. And the board will recall the findings of the study were presented to the board at its January 25th special informal meeting. Stephen Schrever with PFM Consulting is here today virtually, should the board have any technical questions related to the study. The board held informal meetings also on February 22nd and March 29th on impact fees. And the county held a virtual public workshop on February 16th. And we also created an impact fee webpage. webpage and uploaded the impact fee study and the events, or the recording of the events, in addition to the calendar of all scheduled activities for impact fees. The board held their first public hearing at its regularly scheduled board meeting on April 5th. Finally, there was an electronic form that was on our webpage that was created to solicit public comments, and since the first public hearing, we have received five public comments. I'll read these briefly to you, so they're entered into the record. I know in meeting with some of you individually, you indicated you received additional letters besides these comments. The first comment is from Jeff Robbins at 8600 South Ocean Drive, Unit 701, Jensen Beach, and his comment was, "I'm in full support of having St. Lucy County Board of County Commissioners raise impact fees to properly reflect the actual costs of new development. If it has proven that the current impact fee structure does not adequately reflect those costs, by all means, we must raise the fees to the maximum allowable under the law, and if the increase in fees is still not adequate, we should encourage Florida State Government to enact legislation that allows for proper reimbursement for the county by the county. In an environment like today where high inflation is prevalent and impact fee adjustments are limited every four or five years, it has to be impossible to match fee revenue collected today against future land development costs like schools, roads, etc. Government needs better tools to compensate for these assumed losses like automatic inflation adjustments and annual fee structure reviews. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community."
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For the record, I just want to make sure that the public knows that the address is actually in St. Lucy County, even though it says Jensen Beach.
That is correct.
It's the mailing process in that section of the county, so just for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The next is from Mr. Ernest Galphus, also from 8750 South, or 8750 South Ocean Drive, Jensen Beach, Florida. His comment, "We encourage you to adopt impact fees by the state for the beach restoration project." Thank you. The next comment, there's actually two. I'll read the first and then note the second. It's Mr. William Friend Haynes, Jr., 1321 Carlton Court, Fort Pierce, Florida. His comment is, "I'm building in a PUD development with private road designation, and I have to maintain this road and pay a road impact fee for the rest of the county. Doesn't seem fair. I've lived in St. Lucy County since 1978. I'm 78 years old, and I don't see me as a new impact to the county. I drive the same roads as before. I have no children in school. I require the same police and fire services that I never needed to call. Just doesn't seem, just doesn't seem fair, does it? Maybe someone needs to look for ways to reduce tax burdens, and we wouldn't be one of the highest in Florida. If it's income the county needs, raising property values through code enforcement may be a better approach." And then his second comment was to temporarily suspend impact fees, change to be paid when the CO gets, until when the CO gets issued until fee schedule is resolved. I just submitted my plans for a building permit. The, so, the last two comments, I'm probably going to, you, I'll, one is from Mr. Harvey Alagud. He has spoke here before. I can read his comments, but I believe he's in the audience. I thought I saw him. And he's probably going to speak, so it's the comments that he's provided you before. And then the other was from the, that you received the letter from the President's Council of Hutchinson Island. It's reiterating their support for increase in the county impact fees consistent with the resolution adopted by the Citizens Budget Committee on March 18th.
Mr. Chair, before he moves on, I think many of us have received several more emails, and those will all, for the public's knowledge, those will all be made part of the record.
Correct. I think we all received them, many of them. Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, as you know, impact fees have been around since the mid-1980s. They are associated with new development and growth, and the demands and impacts of the county's existing infrastructure and facilities. New residents and businesses are attracted to St. Lucy County, to the quality of life and the level of service being provided and offered by St. Lucy County. And in order to maintain that environment, impact fees are the primary funding source to accommodate new development and growth. Impact fees are a one-time assessment to new residential and non-residential construction. I'd like to share two important points. First, existing taxpayers are not paying impact fees. New development does, or its impact to the systems and facilities. Without impact fees, it would place an unnecessary burden, an unfair financial burden on taxpayers who have already paid for their impact when they built their home, or it would lead to the county experiencing a degradation in the level of services being provided and the inability to accommodate growth. Excuse me. Absent impact fees, I did speak with Jennifer Hill, and we kind of looked at, because another question was, the statement earlier that maybe it could be made up or through the milage, in order to replace, like, at least for the roads, you'd be looking almost like at a quarter mil, you know, increase to replace, if you did not have impact fees, but to fund, you know, the roads by, you know, your ad valorem tax abatement, your ad valorem taxes.
And just let the audience know and people that are watching, Jennifer Hill is the head of our, oh, and.
She's our Director of Office and Management Budget.
Thank you.
Second, I think it's important to provide some context on the overall impact fee conversation. The county controls a few of the components of the overall impact fee equation, specifically libraries, parks, and roads. While the county assesses public building impact fees, these impact fees benefits facilities that are served by the public, by constitutional officers and other agencies. They just don't benefit the buildings under the control of the Board of County Commissioners. Similarly, the board assesses the law enforcement impact fee for which the capital expenditures benefit the sheriff's office and they're under control. In addition to these impact fees, there is the fire district's impact fee, school districts, and their respective city impact fees levied. Very much like the overall military discussion in the county, a significant portion of the impact fee equation is not under the control of the county commission. A few key points regarding impact fees, and I'm just kind of touching on these, you know, since we don't have our consultants providing the presentation. As you know, first and foremost, they must be proportional and reasonably connected to the spending of our impact fee funds on capital project, improvement projects, and that benefit new development. They must be based on recent localized data. Local governments are required to publish a notice on the impact fee increase a minimum 90 days before becoming effective, and for the record, for those impact fees that will be increasing that are recommended, the effective date would be October 1st, or fiscal, the beginning of fiscal year 2023, whereas for those decreasing, the effective date would be June 1st. Why are we here? In addition to, you know, there's been many legislative changes. You know, I mentioned that the city or the, the county has updated its impact fees, at least it relates to other impact fees, library parks, law enforcement, and in 2017, and then in 2000, it was implemented in 2019. Well, there's been several legislative changes since then, and also with the adoption of the immobility fee, it kind of, this is a general comment, not specifically related to the libraries or the other ones. It caused the county to have to go back and look at its impact, the road impact fee. But one of the biggest in 2021's, the legislation was enacted that provided for the maximum allowable impact fee increase of 50% over the current impact fee rate unless the county was able to demonstrate and find extraordinary circumstances to implement a fully calculated impact fee rate. In addition to establishing the allowable, maximum allowable impact fee at 50%, the legislation also provided phasing requirements. Impact fee increases less than 25% are required to be implemented in two equal annual installments. Impact fees greater than 50%, or greater than 25% and up to 50% are required to be implemented in four installments. A local government for equal installments. A local government may not increase impact fees more than once every four years. The statute does provide the ability for a local government to increase beyond the 50%, for example, up to the fully calculated impact, or before the four years, if local government can demonstrate and make a finding of extraordinary circumstances. The information that we're presenting to you is we are not suggesting that that's what the county would do. We're looking at the four-year period and then looking at the, planning on at the appropriate time for fiscal year 27, having an impact fee study done prior to that for implementation on that point. So, we will be focused on the maximum allowable increase up to 50% permitted by Florida statute, and again, and staff will also be recommending, regardless of the percent of the increase. If it's 12%, which could be implemented in two, which is for consistency purposes, we're recommending it be implemented in four years. I, well, I think I've stated this already. The county first implemented its impact fees in 85. Again, we updated, it was implemented in 86, but we updated last our library parks, public buildings, law enforcement in 2017, and roads was done in 2019. Now, we'll move on to Agenda Item 981, library fees, library impact fees. Here's a map of library fee districts. This morning, you received on your, on the dais, a copy of an ordinance for the library impact fees. I want to apologize inadvertently in replacing the color map with the, with a black and white map in the ordinance, inadvertently included in your original packet, the parks impact fee map. So, I noticed that last night, changed it, printed them out this morning, and provided them to you. So, what you have in front of you, the only change to that library impact fee ordinance is the correct map, which identifies the library impact fee districts. Again, my apologies. These tables are excerpts from the PFM Consulting Group impact fee study. Library impact fees are assessed to residential development. Table 35, upper left, identifies the impact fee units for the associated land use, the current impact fee, the maximum or fully calculated impact fee, the maximum allowable impact fee, consistent with the statutory provisions, which is no more than 50% increase. Those cells highlighted in tan or golden rod are those where the fully calculated impact fee exceeds the maximum allowable. The bottom table, 3-6, is the proposed library impact fee schedule, implemented at the statutory maximum of up to 50% increase over the impact fee. For instance, the total increase for a single family is $119.89, and that represents a 43.4% increase, and the four-year annual phased-in amount is $29.98 per year. Here, you have a very, a five-year, four-year financial analysis based on this study. As you can see, generally speaking, while in fiscal year 2025, there is a slight deficit. The most significant project expenditure that will happen within this upcoming couple of years for libraries is the expansion of the Port St. Lucie branch on Prima Vista. The conceptual design came in at $5.9 million in June of 2021. This may just require some phasing in terms of how things are built, because you can see in the out years, you do have an increased additional revenues that would probably cover that, so it just might be a matter of programming. So, it should be noted also, in addition to the, the Port St. Lucie branch, staff has conceptually identified the need for two additional branches based on future growth and demand in future years. One, you know, in the Becker Road area, and the other in Western Tradition. Preliminary conversations among staff as well as with staff of the city of Port St. Lucie have already begun. This is a history of the library impact fees. Again, in 2009, there was a study, and no increase for library impact fees occurred. In 2017, the study was implemented. In 2018, there's a 35.8% increase. And then we have our current study that'll go into the implemented in 2023, and it's a 43.5% increase. This is under the single-family development scenario, 43.5% increase over a four-year period. The Planning and Zoning Commission, as you are aware, met on March 17th. They voted eight to one, recommending the board adopt the impact fee rate at a rate less than the maximum allowable 50% and tie it to a price index such as the CPI. I know we've discussed this. This is information for yourself as well as the general public. Staff believes the CPI would not be the most appropriate index. We provided the indexes that would be more appropriate, either a construction cost index or municipal cost index. And when you look at those compared to the index for a new single-family housing sold price, for the south region, it's 27.4%. It's in line. We think those, if you were going to do something less than what we were recommending, that would be, I think, would be the better index. The Citizen Budget Committee, the following day, on March, Friday, March 18th, adopted a resolution. You all have received a copy of that, you know, supporting, you know, we're supporting that the board maximized the impact fees to the extent allowable by law. And you also received at the last meeting, the President's Council of Hutchinson Island, that letter of support to increase the impacts fees maximum by law. And I read into the record the comments that we received from the public. Staff recommendation, again, I want to note that you have that updated ordinance that just has the map. Staff is recommending that the board approve the St. Lucy County impact fee study 2022 updates and related thereto, adopt all data sources used as the most recent local data available as of the date of the report. Additionally, adopt ordinance 2022-05, adopting the library impact fee schedule, which includes an impact fee rate increase up to the maximum allowable increase 50%, and for certain land use categories, a decrease in the impact fee rate. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'll return to the board for comments and questions, and remind you to open this item for the, to the public for the, as this is the second and final public hearing on this item.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on the library impact fees? Seeing no one. What's the will of the board?
Are we going to take them all at once, or?
Individually.
Individually.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Chair, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Jozowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. The impact fees for library passes, I'd a four-to-one vote. Moving right along, John?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Board, members of the Commission. The next item is Agenda Item 982. It's Public Buildings Impact Fees, Ordinance 2002-06. This slide does represent the calculation of the public building impact fees. It includes, as it applies to both residential and non-residential development. Like those presented for library impact fees, the outlined column represents the maximum calculated or the fully calculated impact with the highlighted tan or golden rod cells being those where the fully calculated exceeds the statutory maximum allowable 50% increase. The highlighted blue column to the right represents the maximum allowable impact fee increase. For the public building impact fees, this is the phasing schedule. Here, you will see the impact fee and the proposed impact fee rate columns for each year. I would like to note, for each of the other impact fees, the consultant, as they prepared their plan, initially believed that we were going to be implementing these in fiscal year 2022. As I stated earlier, we would be implementing them in October 1st of 2022, which is really fiscal year 23, so we don't want the column headings, you know, they're not misleading. It's just that we are implementing on October 1st, 2022, but it's the fiscal year 23. The total increase for the public buildings for single-family development, the statutory maximum increase for 50% is $182.50 and 50 cents, and that would be phased in over four years with a yearly increase of $45.63. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on March 17th, recommending a five-four vote for the board to adopt the public building impact fee rate, the maximum allowable amount. The Citizens Budget Committee approved the resolution provided to you previously, as well as the President's Council of Hutchinson Island and their letter of support, you know, for the county to, for the maximum allowable amount, and then you received the public comment that I've read into the record. Staff recommends to the board to approve the St. Lucy County impact fee study 2022 update and related thereto, adopt all data sources used as the most recent local data available as of the date of the report. Additionally, adopt ordinance 2022-06, adopting the public buildings impact fee schedule, which includes an impact fee rate increase up to the maximum allowable increase 50%, and for certain land use categories, a decrease in the impact fee rate. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to return this to the board for comments and questions, and then also remind you to open this item to the public for the second and final public hearing on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, and this is on St. Lucy County impact for public buildings impact fees. Is there anyone from the audience that would like? Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
Chair? Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Bart and a second by Commissioner Zadowski in favor. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Zazowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving right along, John?
Yes, Mister Chair, members of the commission. The next item is item nine A three, law enforcement impact fees, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero seven. This slide represents the calculation of law enforcement impact fees. And similar to public buildings, it applies to both residential and non-residential uses. Again, the outlined column represents the maximum calculated fee with the highlighted cells being those where the fully calculated impact fee is greater than the statutory or maximum allowable increase of fifty percent. And then you can see, this is the phase-in slide that shows the four years for the, with the current and then the proposed impact fee phased in. The total proposed increase for law enforcement impact fee is a hundred and twenty-three dollars at the statutory, which is at the statutory maximum fifty percent. Again, this is required to be phased in over the four years, and the annual increase amount would be thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. Again, the board, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a meeting on March seventeenth, voted six to three, recommending that the board adopt the law enforcement impact fee at the maximum allowable amount, fifty percent increase. Citizens Budget Committee provided you a resolution supporting maximizing the impact fees to the extent allowable by law. The president council of Hutchinson Island, again, issued a letter of support, increasing the county to adopt a impact fee schedule maximum by law. And you received the letters that came into the, we are online. With that, staff recommends the board approve the St. Lucie County impact fee study, twenty twenty-two update and related thereto, adopt all data sources used as the most recent local data available as of the date of the report. Additionally, adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, adopting law enforcement impact fee schedule, which includes an impact fee rate increase up to the maximum allowable increase fifty percent, and for certain land use categories, a decrease in the impact fee rate. Mister Chairman, I'm going to return to the board and for questions and to open this item to the public, remind you to open up the public for the second and final hearing on this item.
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on the impact fees for law enforcement? Seeing none, we'll close public comment?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, a second by Commissioner Bart. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zazowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to parks?
Thank you, Mister Chair. The next item is item nine A four, parks impact fees, ordinance two thousand two, excuse me, two thousand twenty-two dash zero eight. Members of board, this, the map on the left represents the current parks impact fee district, and the map on the right represents the proposed parks impact fee district. The county is migrating from two impact fee districts to four, three on the mainland and then the island district. Parks impact fees apply to residential and lodging development uses. Similar as presented as other impact fees, the table, top table represents the maximum calculated impact fee in the dark border, and highlighted cells depict those that exceed the statutory maximum allowable increase fifty percent. Bottom table, table, uh, revenue number four nine, is the proposed parks impact fee schedule, implemented the statutory maximum fifty percent increase over the current impact fee. The total increase is eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, phased in over four years. The yearly increase is two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents. So we've put together, as you are aware, some financial analysis here. And again, I want to preface this because it's similar to the comments made on March twenty-ninth and April fourth. This projection is reliant upon several capital project placeholders. The Parks and Recreation Department is in the process of preparing a proposed implementation plan or schedule that will be presented to the board for its approval. The implementation plan is related to the comprehensive ten-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan adopted by this board on January eleventh of two thousand twenty-two. Please recall, the master plan contemplates approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars in capital projects and improvements, so this will change drastically at such time that you make the decision to prioritize what projects and when. In terms of the history of the parks impact fee, again, single-family development scenario, in two thousand, uh, two thousand nine it started, but it was implemented in two thousand eleven. We had a pretty substantial increase of a hundred and eighty point one percent. The next study was in sixteen, implemented in seventeen, fifteen point seven percent increase. And this study in twenty twenty-three is recommending the fifty percent increase over a four-year period. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on March seventeenth. They recommended nine oh for the board to adopt the parks impact fee rate less than the maximum allowable amount and tie it to a price index as CPI. I've already explained that, so I'm just going to move on. The citizen budget committee provided you a, adopted a resolution supporting the board to maximize the impact fee to the extent allowable by law. And you also received the letter from the president councils of Hutchinson Island for, to increase the county's impact fee to the maximum by law. And I've shared in the record the notes we received, the comments from the public. Staff's recommendation is, excuse me. Actually, before I give you staff's recommendation, because this will be the last item for our other impact fees, I'd like to take a moment and thank Stephen Shriver with the PFM consultant. Stephen completed this project, and as you are know, he retired. And then he continued to be involved until we got, until we came to this point today. We appreciate his efforts, and we wish him well in his full retirement. Now, staff recommend you approve the St. Lucie County impact fee study, twenty twenty-two update and related thereto, adopt all data sources used as the most recent local data available as of the date of the report. Additionally, adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two zero eight, adopting the parks impact fee schedule, which includes an impact fee rate increase up to the maximum allowable increase fifty percent, and for certain land use categories, a decrease in the impact fee rate. Mister Chairman, I'll return to the board for comments and questions. I remind you to open the item to the public for the second and final public hearing on this item.
Thank you, John. Again, this is a public hearing, is it, would anyone like to speak on the parks impact fees? Seeing no one? I'll close public comment?
Chair, move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson? Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zazowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to road impact fees?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Road impact fees are ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine, agenda nine A five. Couple items, Mister Chair, Tindale Oliver, now known as Benesh, completed the county's road impact fee study update, of which the study is provided as an attachment to the agenda item. The board will recall that Negan Camp with Tindale Oliver at the time presented their findings on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, at a special informal board meeting. And she is joining us virtually today to answer any technical questions the board may have. The board held additional special informal board meetings on February twenty-second and March twenty-ninth on impact fees. The county held two public workshops, an in-person workshop on February third and a virtual on February ninth. We also created an impact fee webpage and uploaded the impact fee study, calendar of events, and the impact fee workshop recordings. Finally, there was an electronic form created to solicit public comments. I'm not going to reread those comments. I mentioned at the outset that they apply to all impact fee items. So moving right into this, you have, the map on the left is the county's current road impact fee benefit zone or district map. There's a single mainland benefit district, and there's three barrier districts. The map on the right is the proposed road impact fee benefit zone maps, which proposes three mainland districts and two barrier island districts. Same map, this is, just helps me with my vision to see it larger. Hopefully you too. The board will recall, based on comments received from St. Lucie Transportation Organization, Planning Organization, as well as the consultant for the, on behalf of the city of Port St. Lucie, the county, in addition to directing its, our consultant to review the model utilizing, review the analysis utilizing the Transportation Coast Regional Planning Model version five. We also retained an independent company to review the Tindale Oliver, Benesh study. In addition to reviewing the methodology and the calculation, SME, which is a transportation planning and engineering firm, they also independently modeled the traffic and ultimately determined the methodology, the process is correct, valid, and can be duplicated. So I'm going to show you three separate slides here that, you know, this kind of breaks it down a little bit easier than, than previously, that shows the recommended road impact fee for unincorporated, and there was what's going to occur in Port St. Lucie, and what's going to occur in Fort Pierce. I'm not sure if it's in that order exactly. So this slide shows the recommended road impact fee schedule for the unincorporated areas. Again, it includes the unit of calculation, current road impact fee and the maximum allowable phased in over four years. And it is based on a single-family residence less than twenty-four hundred square feet. The current impact fee in the mainland is five thousand one hundred and thirty. The calculated maximum allowable increase is seven thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. That's a fifty percent increase. Staff is recommending implementation at seventy-five percent of the maximum allowable rate, or rather, providing a twenty-five percent discount to the maximum allowable rate. When you, when you calculate that out, that equals a twelve and a half percent increase. This increase to a single-family home less than twenty-four, twenty-four hundred square feet is six hundred and forty-one dollars. It would be phased in over four years, and the annual increase would be a hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. So you see, the, in the bold column would be the first year, which would be ten-one twenty-three, and then, or ten-one twenty-two, which is fiscal year twenty-three, and then the golden rod, nice black and, you know, gold colors for go nights. But the max would be five thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. What's that?
I heard that.
Shameless. I think Garth Brooks wrote a song about that. So for the city of Port St. Lucie, this slide shows the recommended road impact fee schedule applied to the city of Port St. Lucie. The current adopted is five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, but we do have additional column in there in between the black and gold columns. And that's the, you'll see thirty-nine sixty-one. That's the amount that was being collected under the former inter-local agreement. That was where we were providing the, the city, they were deducting and retaining their road impact fee at the time. So we're just kind of evaluating it from that standpoint. The road impact fee will decrease from the five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars to the two thousand sixty dollars. It is an overall decrease of three thousand seventy, but if you do look at what we were, based on the credit that was being provided, it's about a nineteen hundred dollar decrease. And that stays constant over the four years. For the city of Fort Pierce, the, for a single-family residence of twenty-four hundred square feet, the current impact fee in mainland is fifty-one thirty, and the calculated maximum incorrect, allowable increase fifty percent in Fort Pierce is seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Staff is recommending, again, seventy-five percent of the maximum allowable or the twenty-five percent discount to the maximum allowable rate. This increase to a single-family home for less than twenty-four hundred square feet is four hundred and eleven dollars phased in over the four years, and the yearly increase is a hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents. And this is the busy one, because this is, there's, there's three districts, fee districts within this, the two benefit zones. In large measure, because in Fort Pierce Island, it's, there's a variation in travel patterns. And so therefore, in consultant, in conversation with our consultant and our attorney, outside counsel, we kept these the same because the Fort Pierce Island has different travel patterns than the South Island and the North Island. So what you have here is, essentially, it's the same. They are going, you can see, they're going from four thousand ninety-one dollars, ninety-three dollars in, in the North Island, the maximum would be four thousand six hundred and four. The current adopted in Fort Pierce Island is four thousand seven thirty-three, going to fifty-three twenty-four. Current adopted is four thousand four twenty-eight in the South Island, and four thousand nine eighty-two. Those are all cheap, less expensive rather than the mainland amount of five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. And it still applies with the discount, adopting it at the maximum allowable with that discount, twenty-five percent. And this represents, based on the single-family home in the mainland, the, and this is, applies to the mainland, and it's the, you can see, in twenty, twenty-eleven, there was the implementation of the impact fee study, it was a ninety-one point six percent increase. And two thousand seventeen, implemented eighteen, nineteen, twelve point six percent increase. And in twenty twenty-three, what we're proposing is actually a twelve and a half, twelve and a half percent increase over a four-year period. So there were some additional questions at the last meeting. I just want to touch on those real quick, you know, and on the basis of why the increase, you know, it was so substantial. I, I mentioned that it was about seventy percent was the increase, you know, since the last study. This chart, this is from the Tindale Oliver or Benesh presentation, and it shows the three-year moving average of the cost, construction cost increases from two thousand sixteen to twenty-one. The increase is about thirty-eight percent. In the road impact fee study, the cost per lane mile, if you recall, it's going from three point eight to five point four billion dollars, or approximately forty-two percent. And then you have the issue of the credits that we apply. And keep in mind, these are based on the fuel taxes. The state does index their fuel tax, so they're largely suffering from the increased fuel efficiency from hybrids, from electric vehicles, and increased fuel efficiency standards, whereas local governments do not. And so we suffer from both the inflationary impact as well as the fuel efficiency impact. And so we'll just say a dollar or a hundred pennies in nineteen ninety-four are worth forty-four cents today. So that's, so when you take that combined with the increased cost of construction, that's where you get the seventy percent increase in the rate. So now the financial analysis as it relates to the, just some of the assumptions, and I won't go over them all, because I know we've shared these, we just touched on a highlight on one. The analysis is ten years, but it's most appropriate to look at that initial four years, because that's the time period for our study. But do consider the potential impact beyond, I would suggest. Because if you look to the far right column, it does note that there's two hundred, out years, there's two hundred and ten million or two hundred and eleven million almost, in out years of projects. The analysis is predicated with the FY twenty twenty-two, unallocated, you know, reserves of forty-six point eight million dollars. And it's updated to reflect the twenty-two, twenty-two plan, the public works plan for the ten-year program, to help tell the story of how we were going to, you know, our intent on how we're projecting to spend the funds, you know, over a ten-year period. Similar to the others, the analysis is limited to the single-family development scenario, largely based on a twenty-four hundred square foot home. The road impact fees, revenues collected within the city of Port St. Lucie account for approximately eighty-five percent in the unincorporated area, eleven percent, and in Fort Pierce, four percent. Moreover, last, in the, in the past year, seventy-seven percent of road impact fees collected in PSL were residential, and a three-year trend generally indicates about ninety-five percent of their impact fees are residential. The analysis considered three-year permitting trend, as well as last year's number of single-family permits. We did reduce, or gradually reduced, the number, you know, the permit activity. And based on some recent data, we're seeing, you know, the market's seeing a forty percent decline in mortgage applications, five percent decline in the construction of new, new homes, the construction of homes. Now, we have not been able to localize that data. We are going to be monitoring over the next couple of years. But I do think that this is very generally, that these are conservative estimates. So we're not putting ourselves in a precarious situation where they're overinflated. So we, we erred on the side of being more conservative in these projections. Again, the revenue projected for the first year assumes a rate increase at the maximum allowable rate in FY twenty twenty-seven, but the expenses are based on the projected actual expenses for, for the, over the ten-year period. The first one to start with is if you were to implement, and we're not suggesting this, but just so you, you, you see this again, if you were to implement the fully calculated impact rate, you would have a financially feasible plan going all the way out to fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. Again, we are not suggesting this, but you would see, you see out in thirty, that's where you start seeing a shortfall in terms of being able to. where you start seeing a shortfall in terms of being able to collect $14.1 million of revenue, about $32 million of projects. And again, in order to do this, you would have to have demonstrated extraordinary circumstances by holding two meetings dedicated to that and then adopting it. So I'm just going to move on to the maximum allowable increase of 50%, the 50%. So if you did the maximum allowable increase by statute, which is the 50%, this is what the projections would look like. You see in fiscal year 2028, it'd be about a half million dollar difference, and then in 2029, about $4.3 million difference. Again, we are not recommending this. We are recommending that you do a 25% discount, you know, and so therefore this is the financial scenario based on that 25% discount. And I provided all of you the handouts in advance, and the reason why I did that is because based on that new data, we tapered down or lowered it just by a little bit each year, the number of permits that would be, you know, considered, and that alter, doesn't alter the amount of the projects, but it alters the revenue that's coming in. So previously, if you recall, there was no deficit, you know, or no shortfall until fiscal year 2027, and it wasn't $7 million. In fiscal year 2026, it's about $192,000 difference, but that's something that we feel that generally speaking can be addressed when you're only talking about $192,000 over the, you know, $13 million of revenue. So this shows, this is a table, again, each of these, these projects are, you know, I've collapsed all the categories, the phases, and this shows, you know, from a standpoint of what could be funded, you know, with the 25% discount. And you can see, you're essentially, you know, again, while there is $192,000, over the course of this impact fee study update, you're, you are adopting an impact fee that provides you to be financially feasible over that four-year period that covers the, this study. And the one thing I do want to add to remind you, the box and the, two boxes in the bottom, one, remember the 2027 is when you can implement a new impact fee rate, that'd be the four years. But secondly, this projection does, just does anticipate that you're going to be adopting in 2027 a maximum allowable increase of 50%. So it just, just want to make sure that's stated for the record. But you can see here, again, you're good to 2026. It's in 2027 that some decisions would have to be made, but you'd be adopting a new fee. So if we, the question was, well, could we go lower that we heard? And so we, so we looked at a 33% discount. And you can see here, this puts you in a situation where actually in fiscal year 2026, the last, the fourth and final year of the study, before you can implement a new rate, you'd have a $2.5 million shortfall for that fiscal year. And how does that look if we go back and we look at the next table? Well, FY 2026, you know, arguably you could start the Glades and, or you, you know, and defer the Edwards Road, or you'd have to make that decision on how you're going to make, which $2 million is going to make up, but it's two and a half million dollars. So there's a, it certainly would delay Midway Road if, you know, and this is based on, these are all prepared prior to us receiving and having conversations with FDOT and talking about accelerating that Midway Road project. This is what was at the beginning of 2022, adopted for a 10-year plan, based on us trying to work with our partners in terms of city of Port St. Lucie and show, but where are we going over the 10-year plan with the money that's sitting there in the reserves? Because I mean, it's, it's a genuine question. Well, why is that money there? So now we wanted to be able to show them, well, here's what we were planning on doing, and here's what the plans were. So the point being here is in 2026, you'd be looking at a two and a half million dollar deficit if you would lower than the 25% or you increase the 25% discount to 33%. Mr. Chair, members of the board, March 17th, the P&amp;Z recommended 5.4 for the board to adopt the road impact fee, yet 75% of the maximum allowable amount. The Citizens Budget Committee voted and provided your resolution supporting to maximize the impact fees to the extent allowable by law. As the President Counsel of Hutchinson Island, they issued a letter of support to the same effect, and you've received the public comments that were received by staff. With that, staff recommends to approve the St. Lucie County Road Impact Fee Study and related thereto. Adopt all data sources used as the most recent local data available as of the date of the report. Additionally, adopt ordinance 2022-09, adopting the road impact fee schedule, which includes an impact fee rate increase up to 75% of the maximum allowable increase, and for certain land use categories, and a decrease of the impact fee rate. I want to take a moment here, sir, and I want to thank Tindale Oliver Benash Negan Camp, who worked with us on this, on this report. And then later I do have an acknowledgement page of all the entire team, but I just want to make sure in case she has to, you know, cut off the phone, I thank her for her efforts. So I will return it to the board for comments and questions and open the item, and encourage you to open the item to, to the public for the second, final public hearing on this item.
Okay, thank you, John. Again, this is a public hearing, and this is regarding the St. Lucie County Road Impact Fees. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? I see a gentleman coming to the, to the podium.
Chair Mitchell, Commissioners, good morning. Harvey Allagood, third-generation Floridian, 8750, South Ocean Drive, Jensen Beach, and St. Lucie County, Florida. Each of you are dedicated public servants, and collectively you do much for our beloved St. Lucie County. Roads are expensive, and of the four solely determined by you impact fees, the one of real consequence and the elephant left in the room. 75% as proposed by staff appears to be only a near-term minimum. Of great concern is how soon, even at 70%, 75%, excuse me, how soon the line crosses. Roads take a long time for planning. Four or five years is just around the corner when we're talking about roads. First, I want to thank you, or thank the effort of the majority to move from the earlier, only even more inadequate 60 or 70% to 75%, I trust as a minimum. But I come to ask you to be bold, step forward, and for what is more just, fair, and better, longer term for the county and its current residents, which is growth to pay for itself by supporting impact fees to the extent permitted by law. It's a tough decision, particularly after efforts for good reason to reduce them to encourage development when it fell off the cliff. But that was now more than 10 years ago. And the rules that govern the study, as it relates to roads, even if it were at the amount recommended by the study itself, and this has been supported by repeated studies, its goal or measure is to only ensure D-graded or something akin to that. When I was in school and your children were in school, I'm sure a D wasn't acceptable. We all hope for something better than a D-road. D is too close to failure. We're better than Because of the rules to such an extent imposed by Tallahassee, even to the extent of the law at the 50% cap only begins to make up for the discounts that were made in the past. I ask, suggest, the wiser path is to view that 50% cap, to view the rule that imposes a four-year implementation, a rule that is based on what the costs have been, not the greater cost that we know. We need to make an attempt to catch up, or roads are going to become a burden to the current taxpayers. We all know despite some of the rhetoric and claims otherwise, growth even at the full extent of what the study says, much less the lesser amount as imposed by us by Tallahassee and the rules, it doesn't pay for itself. And that's been a big challenge for Florida for decades. We should learn from some of our neighbors to the South, whom we say we do not want to become. A further quick word about something I haven't already written or spoken about. Roads are important to the economic opportunities that have been laid out by much of your leadership to become a regional logistics center. The Amazons, the Walmarts, the Fedexes, everybody wants good roads. It's county roads that get them to the state and to the national highway system. And it's the proximity to that is why they come here. So I'm concerned about unfunded roads not only becoming a burden to the taxpayer, but making it more difficult to attract those better jobs we're also interested in. A brief word about affordable workforce, affordable workforce housing. On the surface, the argument try, attempts to be made that affordable workforce housing, it's impact fees, and if they're reduced, the housing becomes more affordable. And I don't deny that, but it is not the driver, and there are better options. I ask you, instead of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, oh, my time is up.
I'll let you conclude.
Thank you. I was going to ask for someone else's time, but thank you. Rather than throwing out the baby with the bathwater, our impact fees are basically for people, and most of our housing construction, for people who've never lived here. We're attracting them to grow our economy. They've made no contribution to the community. Impact fees is part of that process for them to begin to make that initial investment. Most of our housing is not affordable workforce housing. So let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, but rather, let's strengthen the rules that are specifically targeted, targeted to affordable workforce housing. And I would even take it a step further. Why should impact fees, as a young man on the Planning and Zoning Commission, let's target, if what you're doing is you're a homesteaded resident, or at least consider, I defer to Mr. McIntyre and yourselves, instead of, for present homestead residents who have already contributed to the county for years, now building a larger home, or their dream home, or their retirement home in the county, why not, in that instance, an exemption as well? They've made their For the benefit of the county that you care about, I encourage you to go bold and go beyond 75%. If not in this good economy, in this hot real estate market, when can we catch up? When? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allagood. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak on?
He's on his way.
Oh, good morning. Still morning, right? I haven't had lunch, so it's still morning.
Charles Grandy, Hutchinson Island. First, I'd like to thank the staff for the presentation that they've made. I think they've encapsulated the road impact fee situation really, really well. I agree with the prior speaker, Harvey. We really need to have the road impact fees meet the requirements, and 75% of meeting the requirements is better than 50 or 60, but it's not 100%, and that's going to create a lag. Two points I would like to make. One is we sometimes confuse impact fees with taxes. Think of them in the same way as a tax increase. But the truth is, if we don't set the impact fees at the correct amount, but set it lower, what we do is we cause a tax increase. Because those services that the county has to provide to its residents, if they're not paid by impact fees, they're going to be paid by ad valorem taxes. So if you cut down from the 100% on the impact fee, you will be, in the future, increasing ad valorem taxes. Second point I'd like to make, and the last point. Each of you appoint members to the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, and each of you looks at the qualifications of the people that you appoint. And this is one of those committees that is probably among the best qualified in the county and the hardest working. And these guys start work at eight o'clock in the morning, and they've done a dynamite job, and they support the 100% recommendation. I'd like you to take that into consideration when you look at where you wind up with road impact fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on road impact fees? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any questions or motions by the board?
Mr. Chair, a couple of comments. Number one, you know, I don't disagree with the speakers suggesting that growth does not pay for itself. That's, that's been clear throughout the history of the state of Florida. I will suggest that much of what was stated is accurate. I'm going to go back to the comment about how the board in previous years reduced impact fees. And John, if you can go back to your, to your slide that goes to the studies going back to 2010, 910. So here's where is a good indication of the board back then did not exactly reduce the impact fee and indeed actually increased it. And I sat on that board at that time, and there was a significant debate on whether or not to, to meet Dr. Nicholas, who was the expert at the time, his position that the St. Lucie County was far behind in our impact fees and where we should go and where we should be at that time and going forward. You'll see in that particular standpoint there in 2009, 10, 1011, that the increase was 91%. Well, the argument back then too was the recession was hurting the ability for the state and the county to move forward. Well, during that same time, arguments from the, from the, some individuals and/or other outsiders were saying that, you know, maybe you should put a moratorium on impact fees. Well, Dr. Nicholas again stated very clearly in his expertise that impact fees do not stop growth. They do not hinder the ability for outside investment. It's the market that sets that determination. So in that conversation, I believe it was either, don't quote me, but anywhere from 19 to 27 counties did away with impact fees completely. And through that evidence period, no additional growth was happening in those particular counties because of their reduction to zero or moratorium on impact fees. So, so clearly it is a market-driven situation, and you heard from the builders and I don't know if the Realtors had spoken to it, but the fact is, is that it's a past. the fact is, is that it's a pass-through. It truly is a pass-through. So those who are coming here, who are creating the growth and the challenges on the, on the system that which we need to provide for, the services, the roads, et cetera, are demands, are demands from those coming here. I agree with the speaker too that if we do not implement appropriate impact fees, it largely can be a increase in ad valorem taxes, which is an ad valorem tax, a tax on each of you who own properties in San Luis County to make up the difference. I'm not a proponent of that. I don't think, and we've been arguing and we've been working for, well, probably close to 10 years to figure out how do we right-size our budget to meet the needs and services of the county today, tomorrow, and the next day. So as part of that conversation, moving and creating a balanced budget to which we have been able to accomplish, and through several different boards, we've been able to reduce the millage rate and, and meet the needs of the general public who have already here to reduce their cost of being residents of this community while maintaining quality of life. The quality of life is why you're seeing people come here. So all of what we have done to create this mechanism by which people want to enjoy that quality of life, the roads, the libraries, the parks, all of those things make a difference whenever you're bringing a corporation to a community, which brings jobs, which brings the revenue to buy those houses, to pay those impact fees, to create the opportunity for a, a, a well-rounded economy in San Luis County. So that said, I'm going to go back to the challenges that we face. And again, I don't disagree with, with the folks who spoke. I understand that the Citizens Budget Committee is a very thoughtful group. They expend a great deal of time in those meetings and outside their meetings, making sure that they have all the information necessary, meeting with our staff, and, and really having thoughtful process in which to come to their conclusions. The challenge for us is, this is politics. This is the sausage-making process. And so as part of the sausage-making process, you don't want to see it, you don't want to look behind the curtain. But the fact is, is when you are trying to create and find consensus that goes across, in this case, three different entities, four, including the village. So you have Port San Luis, Fort Pierce, San Luis County, and the village, all of which have an indication or input into what we're trying to accomplish. Each has their own mechanisms, each has their own challenges that they want to achieve and fix and/or to project. So through this process, it's been probably now a year and a half, give or take, it seems like 10 years, but that's beside the point. But the fact is, is that we have been able to come together as elected bodies, the staffs associated with, the outside consultants, all of that has been a mechanism to find solution, resolution, and a positive step forward. So I just wanted to share those thoughts with you, and I want to hear from my board as to what they think about the suggestion from staff and/or some other alternative. But at the end of the day, I've provided you with my thought process as to the general overall scenario that we're seeing in front of us. And again, the sausage-making process is finding, how do we find our way to yes? How do we take the municipalities and the, and the county and find a way to yes? And what's in the best benefit and the best outcome for our community today? That said, Mr. Chair, thank you for the time, and I'll come back after.
Would any one of the other commissioners like to speak?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I will not be as eloquent as Commissioner Zdowski, but I will say you've made a lot of great points. So, and I will also agree that sometimes it feels like it's been 10 years working on this one project, but important, an important item that's come before. Turn my mic off. Sorry, I'm not saying it all over again. Just saying. So, a lot of thought was put into this. Obviously, the staff, the consultants, we, we worked hard with our partners. And we made sure that we were transparent to all those that were out there. And I'm going to just say, and I know I'm going to be missing, but Treasure Coast Builders Association, the cities in the village, the Realtors Board, the Chamber of Commerce, and all of our current residents. And I believe that we've listened, we've all worked together. I'm going to say that probably even with this and the negotiation and the mediation that you don't have that without give and take. So I'm going to say that probably everybody in that circle may have an objection to something or feel that they didn't get everything they wanted. But that doesn't happen when you're negotiating. What happens is you all work together. And what happens when we're negotiating and we're doing mediation and we're talking to every, everyone, we must keep first and foremost in our minds is our current residents and the residents moving in here. It is hard to, as I've heard sometimes, get rid of impact fees. I can't go back to all the residents that we have in San Luis County and say, yeah, you paid impact fees, we're not going to go forward with them. So I think that it's important that we are looking at what is fair and responsible across the board. I thank the Citizens Budget Committee, what you, your input and your thought and your time is so, so appreciated. So by coming up with this process, I also agree with both my peer and with Mr. Allgood is that somebody has to pay for this, these roads. And the building that is going on in this county is astronomical. And all of that makes an impact on every one of your roads, every one of our libraries, every one of our schools, and certainly our law enforcement. So I personally don't believe that that should be on the backs of our current residents who've already paid for their impacts. So I'm supporting this. Again, not as eloquent as Commissioner Zdowski, but is what it is. And thank you for hearing me out, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais would like to speak? Commissioner Hutchinson?
Mr. Chair, I just want to give a shout-out to our staff and all of the outside support that's come to the table to help us get us where we are today, whether we agree with it or not. The facts are the facts, and I think it's been massaged and worked over as much as it possibly can to make it as palatable as it can. And this is Commissioner Zdowski, and I think all of us were here, what, four years ago when we went through this same episode and we actually worked very hard to break down and make room for affordable housing. We broke down by square footage, which I think was the first time that was done. So to, for anyone to think that this board does not give serious input into any time you have to raise any type of a fee would be, I'd like for him to sit in our shoes sometimes throughout the full, you know, like, come join a commissioner for a day kind of thing and watch how it goes. So I, my thoughts are really based on the thinking all of those that have been involved outside from the public, along with those that have worked, outside consultants, along with our own team. It's never easy, and you still struggle with, is this the right decision or is it, it's not the right decision? But when you know that there's been this much effort put into it and this much thought put into it, and that the needs are real. I'll ask you to flip to the slide, look at the roads. And I mean, we always focus on the roads, but the other ones are just as important, just as critical, and it's odd, nobody wants to talk about those, but it always comes back to the roads. Look at what the county has planned and what we've been putting aside. And the best part is that we don't, we have a history of not going into debt for our roads, that we pay it upfront, and save the money until, which others may feel a different way, but it's always worked very good for our credit ratings and everything else. But when you look at the roads that are listed here of what's planned, every single person, whether they live here now or they will be coming, those are all centered right within the middle of the county. So it doesn't matter if you're in a city, over on the islands, you're going to use those roads. They are also the roads that are going to be part of the future of this county. As we move forward over the next couple of months on the different projects we've got coming in where the growth is, that is the roads that will affect the future. So as much as I may not like impact fees, as much as I may not think that they are always the fairest in some areas, because I do, Commissioner Townsend, you pointed out last time, and, and I've given that a lot of thought, you know, you don't want to hurt the small businesses, and I agree. I want to give them room to move forward and so forth in the, in the affordable housing and stuff. But what about the, also, the people who have lived here forever, have bought, and then all of a sudden want to go build a home for the first time, and they're not changing the, the difference? It's still the same people, but I've got somebody buying that old house. So just as we did with the breakdowns, I would challenge us to, for the next four years, to look at newer ways that are more innovative as far as where can we help those areas? You know, that you had mentioned, and I, and I think we can get there. So those are kind of my thoughts. I am going to be supporting the staff recommendation after I get some clarification and explanation for the public's side of it, when you go back to that one slide. But I think this is critical when you look at the roads, and it's spelled out where these impact fees are going, which is kind of what we've always said with the infrastructure tax and so forth.
I'm done. Okay. Because you said you wanted clarification, did you?
Well, I do, but I didn't know if you wanted to speak or anything.
No, I'll speak after you're done, finish.
No, I'm done, but I can wait till the staff recommendation actually goes before the motions and so forth, because I need this recommendation clarified. When you're looking at it, it's reading the impact fee increase up to 75 percent, but there's nothing in there that says what we've been talking about, the decrease.
Yes.
And again, it's misleading to those that haven't been, we've talked about.
That's an error on the slide, but the ordinance does reflect it. It's, I think it's the only one that's like that, let me just make sure I'm not reading Yes, so it, so, because this, if you recall, this is the only one that we're doing, 75 percent of the maximum, so I left out a portion of it. So it's, it should include an impact fee rate increase up to 75 percent of the maximal allowable increase. Actually, it's correct. So the maximal allowable increase is 50 percent, and you are implementing it at a rate increase up to 75 percent of the maximal allowable, because some categories are not going to be, be all the way up to the 50 percent. Like when we did the, look at the libraries, it was 50 percent, up to 50 percent, but actually for a single-family residential, it was only 43.4 percent. So therefore, we didn't want to say implement at 50 percent, because that would have been, we would have been implementing too much for those that fall under the 50 percent. So this is up to the 75 percent of the maximal allowable increase. I probably should have parentheses of 50 percent in there, but it's 50 percent increase, then up to 50 percent increase, and then that 75 percent implementation rate, or 25 percent discount, if you will.
Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend?
I'm just going to keep my brief. I've said it before, and I mean, I have not changed my mind. This is to increase impact fees, and I am happy, Mr. Allgood, that you came to the podium and you brought up about people that have been here for a long time, and they are homesteaded and they want to build. I've asked us to have that conversation, so Commissioner Hutchinson, thank you for remembering that and moving forward that we, we do need to have that conversation. One of the things that was also brought up about is the building and the growth. Well, it's the businesses that have come here that have created the growth, and yet we waive impact fees for them, and we waive fees for them. And then the people come here to make the $10 or $15 an hour job are the ones that are trying to buy the house. And so the development then pushes the impact fees over onto them too. So that is my struggle with this. My struggle is we have impact fees. I don't, I understand prices go up, road cost goes up, but at the same time, I am not wanting to do something that's going to take away all the jobs we've created when those people cannot come here and they cannot afford to build because impact fees are now going up again. So I'm not saying this to debate anything. I think it's clear, and I think I've had this conversation in the past. I'm not supporting it because I, we have to find a way to make things better for the people that want to come here and live individually. And we've done a great job at creating jobs, but now we are in a housing crisis. In the housing crisis, we have to find a way to make it more affordable for people to be able to afford to build a home. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be supporting staff's recommendation. And to me, I built a house in 2004, I paid my impact fees. I don't believe, I think we're all committed to lowering taxes again this year, and we'll be getting into that discussion this summer. I will not put impact fees over the cost of roads, bridges, parks, and all the things that involve with impact fees on the backs of a taxpayer. You pay as you go. I did back in 2004, and I'm a firm believer that I, I don't want to raise the taxes on the citizens, they're taxed enough, and impact fees are the way to cover the cost of the growth for our county, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chair, move approval staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski. Do I have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Bart. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're going to move on to...
I have one more slide, Mr. Chairman, goes back to a question that the board wanted to see the cumulative effect.
Okay.
And then the desire to see the expansion. Taken into account other jurisdictions. So one of the things I will say before I get into this is, they mentioned about affordability. Previously, Commissioner Hutchinson, you're correct, the, the impact fee rate schedule still retains a lesser amount impact fee for both low income and very low income. You know, it's lesser than what the, you know, a larger, you know, it's income base. So that's one measure to try, or to, a policy to attempt to mitigate that concern. So the desire was to look at where does the county lie or stand as it relates to the overall impact fee equation. And so I'm going to broken it down by three, and I want to thank Joe Sabater for assisting me with this. But number one, we have the top row is unincorporated. Again, while public buildings is not solely, you know, just the county, it does take into account constitutionals, we're including it in here. So for the overall impact fee in unincorporated of $15,526 or $527, 51 percent of it is under control or, you know, being responsible by, by the county. The rest is the law enforcement, and this does, the fire district does reflect, they have a proposed change coming to us, of which for a single-family, the rate will decrease from 667 to 537. And there's been no indication on the school district, you know, increasing their impact fees. So when we look at the city of Fort Pierce, in the, in the blue is for Fort Pierce, that's their impact fees. And when you look at that in comparison to the county impact fee, same amounts, but you have here where now the county is, the overall impact fee for which the county is responsible for, in the city of Fort Pierce for development of a 2,000-square-foot home is about 45 percent. And what's not reflected here in specifically with the city of Fort, Fort Pierce is... And what's not reflected here, and specifically with the city of Fort Pierce, is the ILA, in both of our, the ILAs between both cities, there are certain impact fees where each of the cities...
The ILA.
Interlocal agreement, sorry, love my acronyms. So in the interlocal agreements, you know, with some of it, with our cities, there's a percent that's retained by the cities for, of the impact fee, not including the administrative expenses. So in the case in Fort Pierce for roads and parks, they retain a portion of that. For the city of Port St. Lucie, the amount goes down a little bit lower, I mean, in large measure because, you know, they have their mobility fee, they just implemented that. This does reflect the, you know, based on the upcoming item, the reduction, or at least at this for 2,000-square-foot house, the 15% reduction, or the, what they're going to discount. And then also, you have to keep in mind, they have two additional impact fees that PSL does not have. So you can see the overall impact in terms of the county's portion of the overall impact fee equation, whether it be unincorporated, Fort Pierce, or the city of Port St. Lucie. Any questions on that? Okay. So with that, Mr. Chairman, before I start on this item, in terms of the amending Chapter 24, Article 1, Ordinance 22-10, you received a copy of that ordinance. There was a last-minute revision as it relates to a definition, the definition was encumbered. We needed to clean up a sentence to be consistent with an item that you're going to be voting on here shortly, the interlocal agreement, plus it was actually just a hanging sentence in our code that we need, that was realized when the city brought the item to our attention, at least having the definition including the ILA. So, and it just really, we just, you know, noted that we cleaned up the sentence to make it read properly. So what this is proposing to do, this ordinance, is it's related to the general provisions of impact fees, it's providing a section, really, you know, providing for general definitions, which encumbered is one of them. Making declarations in terms of legislative findings, consistent with the statutes and the constitution. It's adopting, creating a provision that proposes to adopt, incorporate, or by reference, the impact fee studies, both the ones that are current, the Tindell-Olive Urbenesch study for road impact fees, the PFM study for St. Lucie County impact fees, the others, which includes the assumptions, the conclusions, the supporting data sources, and the findings. And Section 24.5, it just, it's restating, that's how it's applicable to new growth occurring in both the unincorporated and incorporated areas of the county, because we all recognize the impacts, you know, our countywide, and the impact, you know, county's facilities as well for residents, visitors, and businesses, whether they be in the municipalities or in the unincorporated area. Section 24.6 is providing for an alternative impact fee process. If you have a developer or a builder that's saying, listen, I don't believe that's my, I mean, I've looked at your impact fee schedule, and, you know, my engineer is telling me, that's not what our impact is, there's a process by which they can, you know, provide an alternative impact fee study, and submit that to the county for its consideration and related to their impact fee. So with that, staff's going to recommend the board, the county commissioners approve the fir, oh, excuse me, this is the second and final reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 24, Article 1 of the St. Lucie County Code, adopting sections related to general definitions, general legislative findings, impact fee studies, applicability, and the alternative impact fee.
Now, is this also under public hearing?
This is a public hearing, this is the second item.
So I'm going to say, again, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on Chapter 24, please, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. And just, since we're talking about road impact fees, I think it would help, be helpful for continuity to take up the regular agenda item 10B2, next, which is the interlocal agreement with Port St. Lucie, and that way we could finish this subject all at one time.
Mr. Chairman, can I take a quick moment to acknowledge...
Absolutely, you should, as you should.
The many people on the St. Lucie, at least the St. Lucie team, that contributed and played a large role in getting us to where we are today. You set before us, in administration, a very ambitious schedule, and I think we've delivered on that. And so, I mean, from, and there's probably one I want to really thank, I left off, and I apologize, I noticed last night, the GIS section for Planning and Development Services, both Ed Blaine and Lori Bender, who worked with us, you know, on many occasions, producing maps and giving us data to help us understand, but it's from staff, administration, the county attorney's office, our consultants, our outside legal counsel, even the legal assistants. I was amazed on how, in the middle of mediation, they were able to pop out, you know, and return an agreement that quickly, with Dan just writing away, and then we scanned, sent it to them, and they got it back to us. So everybody did an amazing job, but at the end of the day, it was a team effort, and we'd just like to acknowledge and thank everybody for their assistance as we get here today. And I want to thank you for your leadership and your time and your direction.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to 10B2, which is the proposed interlocal agreement to city of Port St. Lucie regarding road impact fees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, I'll be handling the initial part of this, it's my intention to turn this over to Mr. Tipton at the conclusion of my presentation, for his comments, since he was part of the negotiating team. I do want, at the outset, to thank City Manager Blackburn and the city staff for their efforts in reaching a resolution on this, as well as the city council for their vote to approve it, which they did approve it last night, or actually, it was in the morning. Seems like it was last night. In terms of, just in terms of background, we've been working on trying to resolve these issues for a period of months through a conflict resolution process, both sides working hard, trying to address issues and resolve them. And again, I believe, at least from a staff perspective, we believe we're successful in resolving that. We have a proposed interlocal agreement that's in front of you. In terms of the highlights, the city would remit to the county 15% of all funds collected by the city pursuant to the mobility fee, which they implemented in October of last year through May of this year. The county would agree not to collect road impact fees during that period of time within the city. Effective June 1st, the city will collect our county road impact fee that's set out in Exhibit A that you just adopted. In addition, we would agree with the road impact fee zones that you approved. There were one zone in the mainland, now there are three, and two on the island, I believe. And so that was also important to the city as part of their efforts to try to achieve fairness. We would agree to use the road impact fees that we collect from the city for roads that was in the prior interlocal agreement, but we've expanded those roads to include roads that are in and around the city. We would prioritize Midway Road, as, which is, the board has already really started that process with the state, but we would agree to do that. We would agree to do that within a five-year period, we would either expand or encumber, that would include our reserves. Right now, the reserves float, but they're estimated to be about $32 million. We have, in our financial statements, a higher number, but those are allocated to existing roads. So you might, some people have said maybe 60 million, but most of those are allocated towards roads, or unallocated is around 32 million. We would agree, as I indicated, that Midway Road would be a priority. In terms of what the county gets out of this, well, first of all, we get resolution, and that's important, because conflict affects everything we do, and it has affected, unfortunately, our relationship. So it's a good thing to resolve conflicts just generally. We also get, the city has agreed to collect our fee, and I believe that's just good government. I think that that's good for everybody. It's good for the county, it's good for the city, it's really good for the development community and the residents that are building, it's just a better way to do it. The city has agreed to take our roads out of their mobility fee, which again, is an important issue for the county. The board has expressed their views on that, and the city has agreed to do that, and we very much appreciate that concession on their part. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tipton, and then I'll, when he's finished, I'll make the recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and I'll just add a few comments to Mr. McIntyre's comments. You know, I think at any time, the county has a more regional perspective, and I think that we have been true to that regional perspective. I think that we, over these past years, and then looking forward, I think that we have a plan in place that will help keep our regional network moving and strong. As was just shared, the impact fees that are available are not going to be enough in order to do that, and so we look to other resources, including the grants, as Commissioner Hutchinson mentioned, that we've had success in working with DOT and others to make sure that we're not fully carrying this burden, and we'll continue to do that. I will say that this is a negotiated settlement, and so therefore, neither side is completely thrilled. It's just the nature of the discussions, but as Mr. McIntyre indicated, it's important to move this forward. I do believe that we have, in both, in cases, a basis to move forward, and that's important because we have so many big things that we need to work together on. The other thing, as was mentioned, is that we can now provide certainty to the development community, and so that they know going forward what to expect. And the good governance portion that Mr. McIntyre mentioned, where there will be one collecting agency, I think makes that simplified at one-stop shop for them to conduct this business. So the other thing I would just mention, and John went through the thank yous, and they all apply to this interlocal agreement, as well as the, as well as the impact fee studies themselves. But I do want to give special recognition to John DeCannich and Joe Sabater, who have really been the workhorses through this process, we appreciate their efforts very much.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre?
Staff recommends approval.
We have a, do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, do I have a second?
Second.
Everybody wants a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I've got to take a 10-minute break, so we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. We're at regular agenda?
No, we've got two other public hearings, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where are the...
Yeah, we went back, remember?
Nine B1.
Okay.
Nine B1, Stormwater.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is item 9B1, it relates to the Stormwater Culvert Assessment Program. It is a public hearing, as been indicated. The board will recall that we adopted Ordinance 2104 back in February of last year. It was, in the nature of a pilot program, it's a voluntary program, it's another method to try to help people to pay for culverts that are failing, as opposed to going out and having to fund it through a bank loan, so it's completely voluntary. We set up a process through a special assessment process, we worked with the county's special assessment bond council there. As we expected, there are some things that we'd like to change. We'd like to streamline the process, instead of having two resolutions, we'd like to have one. And so we work with our bond council to come up with some ordinance changes, which are set out into the draft ordinance. Again, this is an effort to try to streamline it, make it simpler and easier, an easier process. Ms. Gattler was involved in the drafting as well, in terms of inputting, and I believe is comfortable with the draft. Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on the subject matter? It's a public hearing. Seeing no one coming to the podium, I'll close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second, motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Bart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nine C1.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
We haven't eaten lunch yet, so yes, it's morning.
For the record, Barbara Gattler, MSBU Coordinator. This is going to be our first MS, Culvert MSBU with the only one resolution, so I'm glad we've gotten to this point. In February 2021, the board established a voluntary program, giving eligible property owners the choice to apply for funding to replace failed driveway culverts, and then repay this funding through the non-abhorrent special assessment against the improved property collected in annual installments on the tax roll. Today's resolution, number 2022-02, is the assessment resolution as required by county ordinance. The purpose of this resolution relates to the imposition and collection of special assessments to fund Stormwater Culvert improvements within the Culvert 2022-02 MSBU, determine that real property therein will be specially benefited, establish the method of assessing the cost of the improvements, and approve the assessment rule. Staff recommends board approval of resolution 2022-02, and authorization for the chair to sign documents as approved by the county attorney.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on the subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say what a great program this is. Knowing that so many residents who have been here for a while are going through culvert replacements, and what I've heard over the years, over and over and over again, was, I didn't know I was responsible for that. That is not, quote, "on my property." So it's really put many, many people into a tough situation, and I think that this helps relieve that. I want to thank staff and for all the work that you've done, and, you know, again, I am very supportive of this. Thank you so much.
Okay, regular agenda, administration. 10A1.
Sorry, had a frog in my throat, I apologize. Chair Mitchell, Commissioners, as you will remember at the last informal meeting, we had discussed the new facility for the District 19 Medical Examiner's Office, and this resolution is the product from that direction that you provided us to place onto this agenda for formal approval. So staff recommends board approval of the resolution, and instructs staff to execute those items within the resolution, and develop a business plan, which will include a financial plan for the county's portion of the project for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Any questions of Nicole?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
County Attorney, 10B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item relates to the opioid litigation, which the board instituted some years ago. There's a proposed settlement with CVS Health, CVS Pharmacy, Teva Pharmaceutical, and Allergan Finance. We've received notification from the law firm that's representing the county recommending approval, their participation agreements, just in terms of the estimated amounts that the county would get on a regional basis, $690,117.73. The county itself would receive $175,091. City of Fort Pierce, $29,194.95. And Port St. Lucie, $71,517.3. These amounts will be distributed over a period of years, it's not all at once. We have created a task force that's working on how to allocate this money in terms of recommendations. Staff recommends approval.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chair, and I may have said this before. Number one, I have to tell you, when we entered into this, I never, ever imagined that we would get here. Big Pharma... Big Pharma is just that, big, big. And I didn't think that we could ever win. I will tell you that I saw on the news the other day, they are now looking at working the suits against Walgreens. So, there may be more, there obviously is more litigation. There may be more settlement funds, but thank you to this commission for supporting us advocating for the attorneys to enter in this lawsuit and thank you for the task force. They are working hard at figuring out exactly what we can do and where we can spend this monies, maybe over years, but anything that we can do for this horrible scourge, scourge on the residents and businesses in this county is amazing. So, again, thank you. And if nobody has anything to offer, I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bart, second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Planning and Development Services, Maite? Good morning. Missy Administrative Approval Monthly Update.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Maite Santa Maria, Planning and Development Services Director for the record. The item before you is the update of the administrative approvals for the month of March and there are two items to report. The first item is Chemical Technology Holding Company. It is a minor adjustment to a minor site plan for an existing development with fifteen thousand square, excuse me, with a fifteen thousand square foot building located at seventy-three ninety-seven Commercial Circle within the Kings Highway Industrial Park. The minor adjustment is to reconfigure the onsite parking, to relocate the refuse collection and enclosure area, to provide space for an overhead bridge crane and soaking tanks, as well as to permit three outdoor storage racks for lumber and wood preservation. There are two occupants within this building. One is for lumber and wood preservation and the other is a metal products fabricator. The second item is Kenworth Environment Drive. This one is a minor, excuse me, a major adjustment to a minor site plan approval to construct a six thousand square foot, six bay maintenance building with associated parking and site improvements at fifty-six ninety Environment Drive, just north of Midway. The maintenance building will serve as a service and repair building for Kenworth, a commercial truck dealership. And that is it for this, or excuse me, for the month of March.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add, not that it's a development update, but just to share that Maite and the entire Planning and Development Services team have been working along with our IT staff on the implementation of the new land management system, Intergov. And we had our kind of internal go-live on the eleventh and we're looking at going live this Friday for the, for our customers. And so, it's not without its challenges, as with any implementation with technology. It's, it never goes perfectly. But I know her team and under her leadership, they are doing, you know, what, everything that they can and looking forward to getting it up and running. So, just congratulations on the progress made so far.
Thank you. Any questions of Maite? Seeing none, thank you, Maite. Okay, announcements.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we have on Saturday, April the twenty-third, our eighteenth Annual Earth Day Festival at the Oxbow Center in Port St. Lucie on St. James. It is a must-see event if you, if you haven't been out there before and hopefully the weather will hold for us, but it is a great opportunity to celebrate our community and to get to know all the things nature. So, looking forward to that event. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, May third, at six PM here in these chambers.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, meeting adjourned.
We'll come to orders, St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Seeing no one will move to the approval of the minutes of March fifteenth.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Today, we just have a consent agenda. Is there anything that a commissioner...
I move. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion once again passes. There are no regular agenda items and I do know that, and just as a heads up, that Josh has been putting out emails to everybody and the, as to what's going on down on South Hutchinson Island. And if you've not yet taken a tour down there, I encourage you to do so. Wrapping up quickly.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Call together to mosquito-controlled district regular meeting of Tuesday, April nineteenth. Any general public comment? Seeing no general, no one coming to the podium, we'll close general public comment. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. On the consent agenda, we have the warrants list twenty-three to twenty-seven.
Move approval.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There are no items scheduled for the regular agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.